As I said before we went live, the growth sections of GHE have been moved to the office of the Chief Executive. Why?
Okay, thank you, Chairman. And I think it was.
Have I lost you again?
Hello.
Oh, right, you're there, sorry. Yes, I've got you.
Certainly, it's Andy Skate here to answer that first question. I think it was certainly considered better to consolidate and bring together all of the related functions around the economy into the single function of economy and partnerships within the Office of the Chief Exec who also currently does matters around the digital economy as well as the financial services economy. So it was considered earlier this year by the Council of Ministers that that was a better alignment around a single political portfolio and a single team.
Right, so how long is, how long will the current stand-in be standing in? And when are you going to find a permanent person to lead up that department?
So the, in terms of the economy and partnerships area, do you mean, Chair?
Well, you said that the growth stuff is all going over to the Chief Executive.
Yeah.
Who's going to be running it over there? I understood that John Rog, the current incumbent in charge, was actually only going to be here for a short time. So what happens then?
So the, the functions that have moved from GHE into OCE have basically been brought together under the current Group Director for Financial and Digital Services. So there is an officer team heading that up over in the Chief Exec's office. And the officer team that we've moved out of GHE have joined them.
All right.
So that's existing, they're all existing members of staff.
Right, and they all have experience of property?
No, so the, that's the economic development function, the economic development function that was in GHE has moved in to join the other economic functions, which were, which was, were part of the Office of the Chief Exec. So that's financial and digital services. So the property functions stay within growth, housing and environment.
All right, and how will the new target operating model, where is the new target operating model? And how will it deliver the aims and objectives of the property division?
Yes, so the, we were going through a target operating model, we've been through various stages of consultations. So we've, we've had a generic consultation about what the new department is. That was some time ago. Subsequent to that, we've put in place most of our jobs at tier two and most of our jobs at tier three levels. There are still a few jobs at those levels that still need to be delivered. And we were immediately pre-COVID about to go into sort of tier fours to six, which is the rest of the department. So that, that's, that part of the recruitment process and staffing process has been delayed because of COVID and it's still in that pause state at the moment.
Right, so from the Chief Executive, including the Chief Executive down, how many layers of management are we talking?
So if the Chief Executive is at tier, if you like, tier zero, we've got the Director Generals at tier one. And the growth, housing and environment structure goes from tier one down to tier six. But that, that's not just management, that's tiers of the organisation. So that includes our frontline staff as well.
All right. Okey dokey, and how will the new Tom deliver the aims and objectives of the property division? And how will it be measured?
Yes, at the moment, I've, I've taken obviously the role as Director General. I'm currently looking at how the structure is, is working. We, we are going to do some review work following various audit reports that we've had around how property is functioning and what the future of property could be. But it's certainly the intention to gear our structure, staffing structure, to deliver the recommendations that we've received in various audit reports, but also to give us the much-needed capacity to deliver the, the property strategy. So to key to that property strategy is firstly being clear what we want our property to do for us within government and how we manage and how we retain it. But also, performance indicators are a, a process within that strategy or something in that strategy we're very clear on that we need to develop so that we can manage and monitor how we use property and how we can make sure it's efficiently delivering for us.
Right, okay, Adrian.
Sure. Your predecessor told us that his desire was to bring the held by education and health under single corporate management. What's, what's happening in that regard?
Yes, certainly. So I think there's still, there certainly is still a direction of travel that we need to take as a government and also as a department to create a single property estate. I think if we're, if we're truly going to be honest about how we maximise efficiencies across that estate in terms of our maintenance and management of it, I do think it's entirely sensible that we bring it together as a one-government property estate. That's acknowledging, of course, that there are multiple users of that estate, whether it be from the health side of the business through to education, through to other service departments. But so it's certainly still the intention that we do that. And we, we're embarking on work now, now that we're sort of hitting the post-COVID position, that we can start our work as to what that means in practice with a view that.
What has happened so far?
Well, in, in the, in the period of time, start of this year, not a lot has happened. A lot of our resources have been directed to our COVID response. And so we, we haven't put in place the, the actions to deliver against the one property estate yet.
And does the scope of that cover other properties held by, for example, the JEC?
It's, the moment is we, we, we need to look at properties that are held within government. So anything in our arms-length bodies are still owned and controlled by them. I think it's worth having conversations in the, in the, obviously in the future about how public property as a whole works together for the island's benefit. But, but at the moment, the focus is on, is on things within GOJ control and ownership.
Okay, thank you. What, what's been done now to secure a permanent estates director?
Yes, so again, this isn't a position that's been helped because of the, the three to four months we've been through. But we, we've been out to recruitment, we have a candidate and we, we want to move into a, we want to rationalise that recruitment and get a, a contract in place for that individual or ideally a permanent recruitment through that process. So now we're into a process whereby our businesses as usual can start resuming again. I want to get that resolved as soon as possible. So we have an estates director, estates director permanently in post.
Thank you. And turning to the state management strategy, which has been promised on a number of occasions. Your predecessor assured us on the 3rd of February that there'd be something by the end of that month.
Yeah.
We're, we're still sitting here, I don't think we've seen it. Can you tell us where it is, please?
Yes, certainly. So we do have a, I'm pleased to say we've done a lot of work to create a, a, a government property strategy and estate strategy. I think it's fair to say we, because of COVID, that's been delayed a bit in terms of our work. But we want to go through the final ironing out of, of that from an officer team in the next, in the next month. And then my intention is to take that through to our leadership team, executive leadership team at government level, council and ministers, and then it will become public thereafter. And obviously, we'd like to share that with, with the Public Accounts Committee on that journey.
And the, and the very long delay in its production, is that a capability issue or a capacity issue or a willingness issue?
Now, I think it's probably the, the two former items. Certainly, we've, I think one of the fair things to say across the property division is, is that we probably need a lot. Well, I don't think there's a probably about it, we need more capacity within those functions to manage the, 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 the very large estate that we have. So we've, we, we're not blessed with the resources on the ground. So I think it certainly is a capacity issue. I think the people we have in post are very capable. But I just wish there were more of them so that we could churn through more work.
All right, and do you have a sense of the gap? What's the resourcing that you're facing into?
Well, I think one of the, one of the, the jobs that I've got to do now as this sort of incoming Director General whilst I'm in this position is, is have a very honest assessment of what we are trying to achieve in property. I think it's very clear that we want a direction, that we have a one-government estate, both in terms of asset management, but also in terms of the maintenance of that estate. That's where we can get better efficiencies and arguably, I feel, deliver the, the concept of property holdings, which we never fully have delivered within the government in the sense that it's, it's in one place and we, we maximise all those crossovers. Undoubtedly, we've got some, a number of vacant posts that we need to, to move forward with. So I, I can't tell exactly the number of people. I know there, there will be additional people required, mainly because we are carrying levels of vacancies in, in our property teams. And we may, we need to make sure that we gear that, that team up to deliver what we want from the property estate. So if we are getting into greater detail about what we hold, how we use it, the value we generate from the estates, indicators of performance around that and occupancy, obviously, we need, we need systems in place that, that show us that. But also, I think we need people in place to do that as well.
And my last question then, to what extent will that form part of your organisation design under the new target operating model? To be able to clearly show that?
Yeah. So from my perspective, property is probably our number one biggest priority in, in the department as it currently stands. The department in its revised form covers regulation, environment, operations, transport and property. Property is a big job to be done and I think we, it is a matter of priority that we make sure that we have the right staffing structure in place to deliver the aspirations of our property strategy. So yes, I think, so for me, the remainder of 2020 is a very busy year around property. We need to fully assess what we need to deliver the new strategy and, and get in place those, those people.
Great, look forward to seeing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Following on seamlessly, Andy, in the absence of an estate management structure, strategy, how can you reassess the viability and deliverability of estate projects needed by the whole of the public sector and reprioritise them accordingly?
I think it's, it's, it's a, I think we take very many things, project by project, if I can say at the moment, Deputy. I think we, we, we have a lot of service needs from the business. But certainly, I don't think we have a, a strategic vision of what our property estate needs to be to deliver the wider service needs of, of government, but also the wider potential benefits that our property estate brings for regeneration and other government priorities. So it is quite difficult to take a, I guess, a comprehensive and a longer-term view of what our property needs are without going through quite a big process around monitoring, managing, capturing the data on its usage and value. So at the moment, we're very much led project by project on that.
How can you be assured that you're spending the island's money wisely if you haven't got a strategic approach? And you're, you're addressing these things by, by your own ambition and I understand why tactically?
I, so certainly think in terms of, if I look at, at maintenance monies and the money we spend on the estates as a whole, I think I'm very comfortable in saying that we, we retain too many properties that aren't working for us, either through service delivery or through financial returns or community returns. The money that we do then have available for maintenance gets diluted across a big, an estate that's arguably too big for us. So I can't, I can't say at the moment that we, we're targeting our money appropriately because we're, we're often very reactive and firefighting with our property estates across the board. So that, 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 the strategy and the, the actions and behaviours behind it are actually very important to get in place soon so that we can target our money more effectively.
Thanks, Andy. Over to Mos.
So, hi Andy. In the absence of this estate management strategy, or at least whilst you're ironing the wrinkles out, as you say, are you able to provide a comprehensive list of current estate projects and reviews?
So I'm getting, picking up quite a bit of interference at the moment. I'm not sure if that's just me.
So can you hear me now?
Certainly, I can hear you, yes. I might ask, I think Tim's on the line with us today to talk about the, the detailed list of estates projects we've got running at the moment. There are many projects that we do have. So if you don't mind, I might ask Tim just to fill in the gaps on that one, please?
Of course, although just to bear in mind that I'm actually talking about a document that the PAC can see that has a comprehensive list of current estate projects and reviews.
Yes, the, that list is effectively the capital programme list. And the capital programme from the last government plan has been reviewed and is in the process of review and will be carried forward and is the basis of the works that we're going to do for the remainder of this year and then going forward into next year. It's been carefully examined, hello?
Yes, I'm listening.
It's been carefully examined to make sure that the works that are included in it are deliverable. And I think one of the questions that the PAC has, has been considering is the effect of the COVID-19 on the capital programmes and on the property estate. And we've been working with the Construction Council, the local Construction Council, to ensure that the projects that we're looking at completing at the end of the year are effectively fiscal stimulus activities that bring value to the construction industry whilst also meeting the, the requirement of, of, of the capital programme. In addition to those planned works, we still have the ability to discharge reactive maintenance of projects as they are required. If anything happens, we have the ability to respond and do short notice works to sort of repair and maintain buildings that need it.
So I'm a bit confused here because you mentioned that you're, you've been going through a list of capital programmes with the Construction Council in light of, I, I think, some sort of stimulus of COVID. And but, but you know, in terms of the actual prioritisation that I associate with, you, you know, you actually having a list of estate projects and thinking, right, this is the most important. What, what, what's the kind of overarching strategy here? Because it sounds like on one hand, are you assessing these in terms of what's going to boost the economy? Or are you assessing these in terms of, you know, this really needs to be repaired? Can you just take me through that?
Yes, of course. And I think you've highlighted one of the challenges that we're trying to address through the, the corporate approach to the, the government's estate. At the moment, the Education Department, the Health Department, Home Affairs all have priorities of their own. What we are putting in place, what we have had in place since November of last year is the Corporate Asset Management Board that feeds into the Regeneration Steering Group. Corporate Asset Management Board is officer level, senior officer level organisation and group and considers all the requirements from across government, prioritises them and then proceeds to, to affect them. So we, whilst at the moment, I think we've had the third meeting of the Corporate Asset Management Board last week, it's still finding its feet. It is nonetheless a, a, a process by which projects are prioritised and those.
Sorry to interrupt. So in terms of the information that you supply them so that they can make these decisions, you're, you're, I'm understanding that you're not able to give complete information in terms of things like occupancy? So how, how exactly are they, how are you presenting to them the actual priorities that they need to consider? If occupancy is not, you know, the extent to which a building is occupied isn't a relevant factor in, in their assessment, what is?
Yes, we have, we, we, we know how many occupants, well, we knew how many occupants there were before COVID. The, the, the current occupancy of buildings is, is varied, obviously in light of the working from home policy. So we've got an understanding of how many people are each building. And indeed, we've had to vary some of our maintenance protocols in light of those reduced occupancies. So we, we, we know how many people there are in each building.
So what's, what's the kind of key factors here? Because are we talking in terms of, we, we, we know that the, are we actually saying, right, the, the greatest state of dilapidation or the most important building in terms of the portfolio that you wish to preserve? So I'm, I'm still trying to understand this process of prioritisation.
Well, the process of prioritisation is, is generally identified by, if you like, the key using organisation. And so the Education Department will identify what they believe is their highest priority. The Home Affairs will identify what they see as their highest priority. And so.
I see. So how, then maybe I might move on to the, how you actually set off these priorities in terms of the different departments and, you know, in terms of the, the competing priorities, as it were. Because we did touch on the Corporate Asset Management Board, who I presume has got a role in this, and their relationship with the Regeneration Steering Group, that in the past it was the, 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 the group that identified properties and disposals, I believe, in, in the two states of Jersey Development Company. And we, we emphasised the importance of clarifying the terms of reference of the Regeneration Steering Group and its relationship with GHE and in particular, the Corporate Asset Management Board. So when it comes to this sort of balancing, you know, this, this setting off, what, what, what are the terms of reference of the Regeneration Steering Group now? Have they been clarified? How does that work in with the CAMB?
Yes, the Regeneration Steering Group terms of reference have been clarified and the remit for a wider purview across all of government has been confirmed. And so the Asset Management Board is in the process of putting together the, the prioritised list and then gets fed through to the RSG.
So you get a prioritised list in terms of the money that you're going to be spending on properties, am I getting this right? And then why would that list go to the Regeneration Steering Group if it's actually responsible of disposals? Because surely there is some sort of initial list that's going to be presented of properties that, you know, might be considered worthy of disposal and, and if that not, at least that's been traditionally a decision for the Regeneration Group and, and those that you want to have maintained. So perhaps you could just take me through this process a bit more in terms of how, for one minute it's in front of the CAMB and then it goes to the RSG. So now, how do you work out which are the, the properties you've been considering for disposal for the RSG?
And I think the RSG, although traditionally its role may have been seen as disposals and disposals for the estate Jersey Development Company, actually, the terms of reference give the RSG a, a wider purview. So it's not just disposals, it has a view on a, a whole variety of projects, including redevelopment and regeneration.
Right, so can you just clarify the distinctions between the two bodies for me, please?
Between the Corporate Asset Management Board and the Regeneration Steering Group?
Yeah.
Well, the Corporate Asset Management Board is a, an officer level organisation that will take, if you like, the, the broad variety of priorities, aspirations, tasks. Some will be disposal, some will be development, some will be the, the opportunity to have additional capacity or, or facilities. And will look at those competing issues. It'll then discuss in light of the government objectives, the island plan, the government plan, and make recommendations that will go forward to the RSG, for the RSG to note and make recommendations back to the, the political bodies that will.
And the RSG, sorry, is the RSG the political body and the CAMB like the, the executive? The, the, the officer body, am I, is that right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so but you're, you're saying that the, these competing priorities result at officer level before going to the RSG?
Yeah, I think, I think we try to resolve them at officer level. I think, I think what Tim's highlighted, it's, it's, it's often a challenge. We have a number of competing requirements across the property estate. But a lot of the, if you like, the service level or the service-led requirements are, are effectively argued and, and championed by the, by the individual departments who, who are occupying and using that property.
Right, so, so there is this presentation, almost like competing business cases?
I think, I think that's right. I think that there is, there is some clarity from each of the service areas as to what, as, as Tim has outlined, that they're, if you, if you like, they're, they're most pressing issues around the property estate that they are running their services from. That clearly informs actions on, on property. And then, and then there is a, a job to be done in terms of marshalling resources across that, which, which is not an easy job to do.
Right, okay.
But if I could just make a, perhaps a clarified point, it's not a strictly linear sort of progression. Thoughts and ideas will be voiced at the RSG. And if they don't meet with approval or additional information is required, they can be bounced back down to the CAMB. So it, it, it's not a sort of a strictly linear progression. There are circular discussions and, and, you know, priorities change and, and issues change as well and they can be taken into consideration.
So you're, you're basically are saying, right, this department wants this, this department wants this. And you take that to the CAMB level? And if there are any departments that are sort of not particularly using any like properties or anything, that's not really perhaps going to be put forward because that's not got a business case associated?
At the same time, if we identify that a property is underused, either because we are paying a lot of maintenance for it or because we don't believe that it's being used enough, then that property will also get thrown into the mix in terms of disposal and will become a, the opportunity for.
Okay, no, thank you. I only want to just move on, so forgive me for interrupting you. So just in, in terms of concern that had been, a concern of Controller, Auditor General was that, and indeed of the PAC, was that we'd seen like a bilateral approach of individual departments in terms of the discussion of the, the, the way in which property was managed in the past. And that basically, we, we saw that different departments would be having separate discussions with the, with, with JPH. And there wasn't this kind of overall, that if you like, we, we didn't have the corporate asset management at a kind of higher level. So what evidence can you give us now of the, of RSG and CAMB stakeholder engagement rather than this bilateral approach?
I think the simple fact of having the CAMB is a testament to the fact that the CNH's concerns were noted and indeed those of the PAC, and that we do now have a body that sits at the highest level of the executive, looks across all of competing requirements, approves. looks across all, uh, um, competing requirements, um, approves and authorizes, um, the, uh, and prioritizes, um, those various projects. And so there's no longer the opportunity or the room for, uh, sort of bilateral deals to be done.
Okay, so does it have minuted meetings?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and what happens with those minutes? I mean, is there a reason why we're not seeing them?
Uh, no, I, I'll forward the meet, uh, the, uh, the minutes to you.
Great. Uh, thank you very much. I'll move on to John Abay.
Thank you. Um, I don't know if this question would be for Andy or for Tim. Um, basically, how and when will previous state's decisions be honored? For example, the promise to the Sea Cadets that they would be afforded decent premises, uh, which has been something outstanding since nineteen seventy-six? Or since two thousand and eleven, the promise to pursue the budgeted local development plan for St. Brolard's Bay?
Uh, if I can, uh, I'll, I'll try and answer that, um, Konatya. Um, the, uh, new, um, capital program, um, which includes, um, the Sea Cadets, um, and St. Brolard's has been, um, um, to a greater extent deferred rather than cancelled. And so, uh, such projects have continued to be in our, um, our conscience and, um, continue to, uh, be priorities for, um, uh, for being undertaken. And however, clearly there's a limit to what we can do within the remainder of the year. Um, and, um, it, it may be that they will be delayed. Um, specifically for the Sea Cadets, there is still a sum of money. Um, and it's a, it is a massive priority for Home Affairs and for Jersey Property Holdings, um, to find an interim solution, um, to the location of the Sea Cadets, um, with a view to a, a long-term provision of a fit-for-purpose and, um, acceptable location for the cadets' facility.
If, if I can add, Konatya, but in terms of the, um, if you like, development frameworks, they now sit under the auspices of, uh, our, our Policy Department, S P three, and, and effectively this, and any sort of local development framework would need to sit within or underneath of the, the island plan. So in terms of delivery of that, that, that's, it's not our role within G H E to do that. But I think that the same answer holds true in the sense that, uh, the island plan, I think, in its current guise, promises a lot of, uh, further local development framework work or, or supplementary planning guidance. And I think it's again a function of, of time and resource available in the sense that we, we, I think we overpromise in terms of what we, we can actually deliver in the policy framework because of the, the, the limited level of resource that we have.
Yes, thank you. I can understand that. But we're talking about a promise that was made forty-four years ago. We, we would have had time to build a new facility and refurbish it since then. And in various ways, we've been looking at the old La Folie Inn, which in itself is a, a terrible example of the way the, uh, states have managed their properties.
I, I, I would agree, Konatya. We've, we've got a number of, um, probably examples around the island where, uh, we, we've gone so far in saying we don't need to use a property anymore or it's not used by the current users or tenants. Uh, but we haven't gone to the, to the next step in terms of, uh, deciding what the outcome for that property is, whether we still own it, whether we dispose of it, or what the future use is. So again, I think it, it, again, the, the, the arrows are pointing towards a property strategy that actually enables us to go through clear, uh, transparent processes to make these decisions so that actually property decisions are made and we don't have sites sort of less, less festering, if I can, um, describe them as that.
Yes, thank you. I, I appreciate that. I just wish somebody would get on with it. Thank you.
Okay, Roland.
Are you open to me? Thank you. Um, how has Covid nineteen impacted on the office strategy?
Um, I think there's a, there's a practical impact in the sense that a lot of our day-to-day business effectively was paused because of, um, our thoughts were immediately on, I guess, the emergency response and the Covid response that has, uh, sort of taken us, uh, taken us out of our day jobs to a degree for the last sort of three, three to four months. Um, so there's, there's been a practical impact, um, uh, in terms of the ability of people to, to either do the job, uh, and to do the work on this project or, or, uh, because we've been doing other things. The, the secondary impact is a reassessment of, uh, what do we, what we as a business think we need in the medium to longer term. Um, and I think it's fair to say that we, we are going through a process of, uh, I guess, just pausing and breathing and just assessing what the future of office work is or isn't. Um, I don't think we have that answer yet, but I know we as a business and many other businesses are going through that, that very same thought process as to where, where is the balance to be struck now in terms of agile working, homeworking, mobile working? Um, and what does an office of the future look like? I don't think we have, uh, fully have those answers yet, but certainly it, it's something that we need to answer as part of our office project.
It's very interesting you draw that. I think it could potentially be very dangerous to have a knee-jerk reaction suddenly everybody working from home. I think there's a blend there. Um, do you, do you think that's gonna have, uh, uh, a, a, additional time delay on trying to get an office strategy replaced, which is clearly needed? And the, the original business case put forward, uh, for moving everybody into, or government into one building is a very clear and strong business case. How do you think that will be affecting?
Well, certainly the, the pressing need and the, the clear and present need that we have to rationalize and focus our office estate is, is still with us. Um, I think what, what this effectively would allow us to do is still go through a process of, uh, finalizing where and who and, and how we, we put an, uh, uh, an office solution in for the state. I think that the post-Covid world means that we really need to assess what's in the building, uh, potentially the size of the building. But I think, um, whilst we may, we may choose to maybe look at the building slightly differently in size terms, it might actually with the current world of work mean that we need a bigger building or different type of spaces which are more flexible. So some of the learning we've seen over the last three or four months is, it, it's, it's been curious from an office perspective, in a sense, or property perspective. Arguably, we need more physical space because of the distancing between people or we need more teleconferencing or, uh, more agile spaces that people can meet and, 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 and see each other and, and converse. Um, so I think, I think we don't honestly know the answer to all of those questions yet. But I, I think in terms of choosing, um, uh, if you like, suppliers to provide an office and where that building could be, I, I think it, that it doesn't stop us getting on with that. I think it does, however, mean that the final specification of requirements or tenant requirements, so to speak, will need to be, um, carefully managed, uh, in this sort of post-Covid world now.
Um, it's obviously a period of huge change, um, and there's a lot of learning to be done. But at some stage, um, a decision on an office strategy has got to be clearly documented. I don't know if it goes to December or not, but it certainly needs to be clarified and nailed down. Otherwise, we'll be constantly going round and round in circles. Um, in, in all honesty, when, when do you think it would be a fair, a fair time, given all the moving parts in this huge change, to actually nail that down and deliver it?
Well, I think in, in terms of general timing, we've been through a process of, um, uh, if you like, tend, tenders coming back in is to, uh, as part of that process. So private, private companies obviously tendering what the solution could be based on our sort of, uh, tenant requirements, uh, at the time. Um, so, so those sort of times, because we're now nearly in July, it's still certainly anticipated. We start making, um, decisions on where we're moving forward with this office strategy in the next quarter. I think the interesting piece of work, as, as I've mentioned, is, it's got to be done relatively quickly. But we've got to assess how many desks we need, how many flexible workspace spaces we need and what our homeworking solution could be. Um, we have, I, I, I still think that will lead to, we, we still have a need for a, a, a single HQ or a, a consolidated office space where, uh, the business of government can still take place. Uh, I think the, I think, however, that the sort of moving picture that we've now got means that we're probably likely to see more, more staff working flexibly, maybe one or two days a week. And, and all the associated benefits that may bring us, whether it be, uh, travel benefits, sustainable travel benefits, um, the ability to recruit a more flexible workforce, work in more flexible hours. Um, so, uh, I, I think there's many benefits of, of working differently. I think the overarching timeline though, and the need for the office, uh, doesn't, doesn't change.
Yeah, but the office is the size that could potentially change. But anyhow, thanks for that. Anyhow, moving on, uh, my favorite subject, I believe Concerto, the Property Management Database, is now live.
It is indeed, yes.
Excellent. And, um, can you please share with us some of the benefits of it that have been realized?
I think the, uh, the first and, um, a very timely benefit is that at the beginning of the, um, Covid crisis, we suddenly find ourselves with schools, um, offices, um, and a number of state's buildings that were no longer fully occupied. Um, and this gave us the opportunity to, um, uh, determine what sort of, uh, legionella flushing regimes were required in the absence of normal use of the facilities. Um, we had to, uh, uh, find out and record what, um, legionella mitigation was occurring. Um, with the, um, onset of, of the use of Concerto, uh, we were able to track centrally on a database, um, all, um, outlets, locations, washrooms, et cetera, um, across the, uh, the state's, uh, estate, um, and see the frequency of flushing use. Um, and therefore the, sort of the, the legionella risk. Um, and where the, um, where the use wasn't at a sufficiently high level or the throughput water or the temperature wasn't correct, we were able to rapidly deploy, um, maintenance officers. Um, we were able to task building caretakers, um, and in some cases, outsource, um, to local companies the, um, requirement to go in and actually conduct the flushing of those buildings, those locations, so that we were, um, sure that we had a safe establishment, um, a safe estate, uh, that when, um, we were able to reoccupy, we could do so. And so I think, you know, in particular, that was a very, um, um, uh, serendipity gave us a very timely function, um, to make sure that we could track, um, the, the, the safety of the premises. And at the same time, it's also allowed us to make sure that minor works and repairs, um, that have been ongoing. Um, late last week, we had, um, a, a, a number of floods and, um, incidents of water ingress. Uh, and again, we were able to, uh, determine the works that are required. We were able to task, um, our contractors with repair works. And we were able to then monitor that the works have been completed satisfactorily. Um, and, um, and again, sort of use Concerto to, uh, to, uh, to maximize its efficacy.
Uh, yeah, that's very interesting. So it's being able to focus the mind on, on essential maintenance works, which is always very important, maintaining any, any, any property state that's going home to anything else. But can you, can you share some of the financial benefits that have been realized? Because that's what most, um, I T systems are, are there to do at some stage.
Um, yes, well, we, we don't really have any business as usual to be able to compare, um, sort of previous use against. So, um, um, the, the simple fact of management of invoices, um, we'll be able to see, um, work that's been completed, issuing invoices against them, um, and make sure that the, um, invoices have been paid, make sure that our budgeting process is, um, is complete, um, which means that we can track the, um, uh, the, the budgets for the various properties much more closely.
Cool. And as you expect from P A C, the standing, uh, uh, the standing question, at the end of the day, how much should it cost and what will be the annual recurring costs?
Um, yeah, I will, um, have to get you those costs, um, and I'll, I'll get them to you at the end of this meeting.
Thank you. Back to the Constable St Mary. Thank you, Tim. Thank you, David.
Thank you. Um, another question, I, I, I don't mind who takes it. It's, uh, whoever feels that they've got more expertise. As there is a massive backlog for repair and maintenance, um, required to the buildings within the state's portfolio, is there an estimated cost of that? And subject to that, you must have a clearer picture of what property should be disposed of. Will that be happening?
Um, yes, you're absolutely right, Konatya. Uh, we do have a backlog. Um, and part of the, um, approach of the Corporate Asset Management Board and the intention of the strategy is to determine, uh, what premises we actually need and enable us to make recommendations for disposal. Um, it, it, it is difficult to put a, um, a precise value, um, across the whole of the, uh, the estate. Um, but it is believed to be, um, um, many millions of pounds worth. Uh, but clearly that will be mitigated by disposing of, um.
I want to know how much.
Um, I can't put a, um, a figure on because that changes with the valuation of the building. Um, that we just accept that there is a, a huge, um, maintenance backlog. Um, but that our ability to determine how buildings perform will enable us to, uh, determine those buildings that we can get rid of, um, and reduce that liability from our balance sheet.
Thank you. Um, has a program of works been prepared or is one in, uh, production at the moment? And will you be able to generate that on the, uh, Property Management Database?
Uh, we, we, we have a program of works in terms of the capital program, uh, which identifies each of the various areas, key priorities for works. That includes, um, um, uh, some school activities, the health, uh, estate, uh, priorities such as, um, finding, um, um, accommodation for, uh, mental health patients. Um, and so we do have a program of works. Um, and that program, um, will be, um, we're working hard to, to, to fund it from the resources that we've got. Um, and, and we'll be able to complete those works in line with the various departments and directorates' needs. Um, what we have to work out is, is the timing, what we can do in year, what we may have to delay until next year.
Thank you. And I, I realize that the thing that's going to hold, hold you up the most is severe lack of money.
Uh, resources are always a challenge. Um, uh, but again, by, um, having, uh, the organization of the, the Asset Management Board, it means that we can look at ways of, 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 um, you know, apologies for the, um, uh, the use of the rather, uh, sort of manager of speech, but we can, we can develop synergy so that instead of just having a housing estate, we can have a housing estate with a youth center that provides facilities for, um, healthcare as well, so that we can actually maximize, um, our ability to deliver resources, facilities from a, a sort of a single opportunity. And that's one of the key advantages of the Asset Management Board.
Thank you. I can't wait to see that. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Um, I'm, um, I'd like quickly to move to another issue. There will be a reduction of revenue due to reduced rents of some state-owned buildings together with the cessation of sports and other income generating activities. What is the best estimate of that revenue loss?
That, there's cer, yeah, there's certainly, we, we, across G H E, we've seen revenue loss in a number of areas, if, in, in the sense that people aren't using our facilities, whether it be sport, um, or whether it be car parks. Um, so, so, so both, um, both have had a, a, a direct impact. Car parks, for instance, effectively car parking comes around half a million pound a month, uh, a month for G H E. Uh, obviously, if we suspend that, we, we, that's the effect, uh, effectively the money we've lost in that area. Uh, sports is in the order of around four hundred thousand pound a month. Um, especially if we're sort of not seeing footfall through the door, they're the sort of numbers that we, we see. Um, I think we're, we're, we're just currently, uh, working the final detail out of that. But they're, they're the sort of ballpark areas of those footfall, uh, related services. Uh, we've also seen, uh, a loss of income in some of the other services that we run, such as. We've also seen a loss of income in some of the other services that we run, such as permitting, licensing, and all of which get accompanied with a fee. Obviously, with certain businesses operating at a lower level, we've seen income pressures across those as well. Properties is one of those as well. We've seen pressure on the property estate. But I'll let Tim maybe think about the detailed numbers on that at the moment. But a lot of the conversations we've been having are around rent deferrals and going into different conversations with various tenants about how that rent can be deferred and paid back over a different payment period.
And yes, the key principle for rents for the majority of our rents is that we are negotiating with the tenants for a deferral rather than a secession or an abatement. And the exception to that is for businesses in the fort or somewhere where we've had to actually close the premises. But our intention is that rent will be deferred rather than cease entirely. It does mean that we may not get the income this year, but over the life of the leases, we will recover the lost rent from the first part of this year.
Thank you very much for the answer and thank you for some numbers indication. And hopefully we'll get more numbers later on. I will move to disability law that come in force in September. And my question is, where is the register of works needed for the estate to comply with disability legislation?
At the moment, we've completed surveys on the majority of our buildings that have public access. And for each of those buildings surveyed, there's a we have the survey itself and we have a recommendation of works. So at the moment, we have individual sort of work packages and we're in the process of putting those together to let them to local contractors to complete the works. So I can forward an example of the survey and the works that are required. And we have those for each of our premises.
Thank you. It will be very helpful. And can you please confirm what this percentage of buildings will be compliant by September?
I can't give you that precise figure. The requirement of the Disability Act is to show best endeavours to complete compliance. There may be some issues that are more challenging to complete, like providing rain shelter on listed buildings. So there's a list of works that we have and we know what needs to be done. We are in discussion with the planners about what works we can do. In terms of their view, we don't yet have the feedback from the planning department to say what they believe will be not possible to complete, but generally, our issues are signage and they are sort of minor accessibility issues rather than wholesale construction issues.
It would be really, really helpful also to get an understanding where we are standing, what percentage will be compliant, if it's minor issues or not by September, when we should be compliant and how many will still need to catch up after. And the last question about disability, there are many types of disabilities. What have you done to engage with the public and stakeholders groups to make the state's own buildings more accessible? For example, Public Gallery of the State Chamber, what can be done? I know it's really difficult to make it accessible, but there are ways around that if somebody would like to access.
Yes, absolutely. You're absolutely right. The prospect of getting sort of lifts up to the Public Gallery are challenging. However, the requirement for the Disability Act is to not disadvantage somebody through their disability. So that means that we could, if required, provide the facility in one of the downstairs and accessible rooms for people with disabilities to be able to access the debates, listen to what's going on, without actually going up to the Public Gallery, including hearing loops. And as you say, depending on their disability. So.
What engagement have you done with the groups that represent in various disabilities that are currently on the island?
The survey has included consideration for a number of the local bodies. I don't have the bodies off the top of my head, but again, I can forward them to you and let you know.
Okay, thank you. I'm thinking about the time that we have for the next most.
Yes. So we understand, and this is about the Ireland Plan. We understand there are plans to produce a three-year bridging Ireland Plan. And the in-committed state debate has been moved to 14th July in that respect. When will the document be ready for public consultation? And how does it affect your approach to the estate management strategy?
That's correct. So effectively, we've been through various iterations of public consultation already in terms of the overarching strategies for the Ireland Plan. This was obviously pre-Covid. I think it's integral now to wait, it's important, should I say, to wait for the in-committed debate as to the final form and and what the final form of that Ireland Plan, the bridging plan may look like. In order for that to be in place, I think we need to just work back in terms of the when the bridging plan would need to be approved by this current government. So if that is in late 2021, early 2022, I would argue that it can't be much later than that because of the elections, et cetera. So we would be standing ready as a department to comment into those processes. Once this sort of bridging plan process has been finalised, so later this year, and it'll be early 2021.
Can I just get a bit more clarity on that? Because quite typical of the Ireland Plan is something that designates land use.
Yeah.
So I would expect that to have quite a, you know, key impact in terms of the estate management strategy. And yet, at the same time, we're hearing it's a bridging Ireland Plan. So how fluid is this going to be? I mean, or are you actually, at this moment in time, very much focusing on getting, say, you know, a more of a kind of set vision in terms of the designation of land use? And so what's the bridging bit? What are the details you're expecting to fill in? Or are we actually finding that we're kicking more cans down the road in terms of the estate management strategy as a result of designation being more fluid?
So the G H E sort of relationship to the Ireland Plan is one that we use in the decision-making areas. The regulation teams use it to make decisions, but also the property team input into the Ireland Plan as a consultee and a sort of property input. The plan itself is produced by the S P three department. So in terms of how that's designed in the process, we're not responsible for that part of the Ireland Plan, although obviously we input into it. What I would expect the Ireland Plan to do is focus on this immediate recovery period that we're now in between now and 2022 in terms of where we think the Ireland housing needs, development needs may be. I think it does tie in obviously with the estate strategy. We need to be ready as a department to make sure that the sites that we think should be pushed forward for development or change are reflected where appropriate in that Ireland Plan.
So, but you're saying that this is more like a reaction to the Covid crisis? Because, yeah, again, this is somewhat, I mean, so far I've seen news of a reduction in terms of population. So perhaps you could just, are you actually saying that this is something just to enable housing to be built in terms of a backlog? I'm just a little, perhaps you could clarify that bit more?
Sure. So in terms of the Ireland Plan, there's a legal requirement to have one. Effectively, the current Ireland Plan does run out by 2021. So the Minister of the Environment is required to bring an Ireland Plan back to the State's Assembly. I think the current, well, the previous anticipation of an Ireland Plan was still fairly fairly racy timetable, if I can use that phrase, in the sense that there was a lot of work to do to get a full Ireland Plan agreed, developed and agreed by the sort of fall of this government before we have the next government. So I think what I'm saying is effectively that that Ireland Plan, we've lost a big chunk of time, certainly in terms of quality resources. A lot of our quality team, team within S P three have been dedicated to public health work. So the bridging plan is sort of, I guess, recognising the fact that we do still need an overarching framework to protect land in the island, protect certain areas of the island, but also to enable development. But invariably, I think it's going to have, it's going to have to be balanced between protection and the fundamental strategy of the plan doesn't really change in the sense that we protect our coast and countryside. That's pretty much what each previous Ireland Plan has adopted. But I do think we also need to focus on those areas of already built development where we would seek to encourage development into and where that can aid our economic recovery.
So what you're describing is generally how the Ireland Plan has always worked, getting that balance between development development and island protection. Are you basically saying, right, okay, we need to have an Ireland Plan, so we just basically got to approve something for now? And that's why it's bridging for three years. And so maybe there may not be much change. What's going to happen? Like, there'll be a roof for you then in three years, that's when you actually get all your big changes? So in terms of its impact on your estate management strategy, do you anticipate any changes whatsoever?
Yeah, so I think they certainly need to have a plan in place so that it can be used for decision-making. I think what we've seen in the current Ireland Plan is that it's becoming of age, if I can use that phrase. It was approved in 2011. It was generally based on work that took place in sort of 2008, 2009. That's when the work started to inform that 2011 plan. So it is somewhat out of date. Some of the policies have changed. We've got different pressures that we've seen. So there is a need to update the framework where we know that we need to update it. But I do think it needs to make sure that it's clear on what we need for economic recovery, where that has a land use implication. So I think it therefore follows, if we're making sure that we look at our property estate in a more efficient and more focused manner than we have previously, it makes a lot of sense for us as a business to make sure that those properties are reflected in the Ireland Plan because the, you know, public land holdings can lever a lot of change in our community if we use them correctly.
Right, okay. So just one more question. You talk about pressures. So when, but we are talking about island planning. So when you say there's been a change in pressures, what's an example of this? You know, I mean, okay, we could mention the hospital, but will there be specifics about that? Or are you thinking of some other sorts of pressures?
Well, I think I would start by saying, I think, yeah, I think it's incumbent on government to understand the significant changes it wishes to see in land use terms for our own estate. So the hospital would be a good example of that, I think. Secondary schooling, we've had a Le Canova School, for instance, built that wasn't reflected in the current Ireland Plan. So I think it's a fair sort of pressure back on us in G H E and the rest of government to think what our land use requirements could be for the next period of time, to make sure that it would be nice for the Ireland Plan to take those into account so that we can have the base on that and actually the community can see a sort of more strategic direction from government around its land use. I think the pressures that we are seeing, I think the biggest one manifests itself in the housing market where despite sort of levels of population, even if the population remains static, we have quite a large degree of latent demand in our property market for our current community to, whether it be our young people or to buy new homes and to set up their own households, or whether it be a change in circumstances across our families or whether it be hidden households and those forms of sort of homelessness, I guess, as well. So I think we're seeing pressures across all manner of areas in our housing market. So that, for me, is one of the most, I guess, magnified areas that we need to respond to.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Right. Ten years ago, the P A C of the day was told that the backlog of maintenance was £100 million or so. What is it now and when will it be completed?
I don't have a precise figure for what it is now. I think, as we alluded to earlier, the fact of the Asset Management Board being able to reprioritise and hopefully allow us to dispose of, should we say, anachronistic buildings or facilities means that it's not actually a fixed figure. We know that we have a liability. But if we could dispose of a building rather than repair it, then that removes that repairing obligation. It means we get a newer building.
If you'll excuse, I'm sorry, we're getting near the end of the time, so I'd just like to cut it, keep it.
Could we ask for a rough figure? A rough figure?
Wait a minute, please. I'm sorry, the picture I've got is Tim is talking and he's not, if you know what I mean. You can't do a cost benefit on disposing of buildings if you don't know what the cost of maintaining it is. So there must be a rough idea of how much maintenance, if you could maintain everything to a basic standard at this point in time, what is the rough estimate?
Again, I apologise. I don't have that figure. Part of the reason for that is that the Health Department look after the maintenance of some of the health buildings. The Education Department look after the maintenance of some of the education buildings. The Home Affairs Department look after the maintenance of some of the Home Affairs.
Right. But those were meant to have been transferred?
They were meant to have been transferred. You're absolutely correct. They were meant to have been transferred in 2005.
Yes, I know. But, you know, the real problem is that much of the groundwork to set up data, Concerto and input the data, to set up a programme of programmed maintenance and the management, the estate management strategy was set up some eight or nine years ago, in fact, possibly 10 years ago. Why are we, you know, we were looking, oh, the place where Customs and the Property Holdings has its office now. The layout of the Jersey Property Holdings office there is the result of the work that was being done, looking at the levels of density of occupation in 2009 or 10. You know, this was all set up maybe 10 years ago. Why are we still being told that many of these projects are still work in progress? When are we going to see, you know, actual results from the work that we've been promised?
I agree. It's frustrating and it's frustrating from my perspective as well. But the one government approach that we are putting forward is accepted across government, across the executive as being a necessity and it has been accepted by the various departments. And it's our intention, hopefully over the next 12 months, to bring that to fruition.
I can add, Senator, I think we both share the description that this has been, this is decisions on property and consolidating property into one management structure and one organisation tasked to oversee it. I think there's been a number of attempts over the years, going back to the sort of concept of the creation of Jersey Property Holdings. And it hasn't happened for a variety of reasons. I think it's only now we've got, I guess, a more corporate approach to life as one government that we're seeing a bit of traction in this area, that actually there is a desire to bring the properties, the management and the maintenance of those properties into one area so that we can affect. of those properties into one area so that we can effectively, and I can only agree, deliver the promises that have been made in the past.
Chairman, may I ask a question?
No, I'm just finishing my question. Thank you. Because it strikes me that you're calling for more resources, which is mainly people, but instead of having seven layers of management from the top to the bottom, why don't you have more sort of middle-level managers or middle-level of management of people who are bright or more experienced, perhaps, is fairer, rather than having this seven layers?
Yeah, so I think the seven layers I've referred to are effectively layers of the organisation, not just management. That takes us through all of our organisation, from, if you like, the manager at the top of that, which is me currently, down to the people at the bottom of that hierarchy who are more junior members of staff. I'm hoping, sort of tongue-in-cheek, that managers can also be bright as well as other members of staff. But I think what we're not asking for is additional resource. I think what we're clear about, we have a current number of vacancies that we need to fill immediately and get on with being clear where they will slot into a new structure. But, yeah, so I can only agree with the sort of thrust of the question, really, in the sense that I don't think the one government or a single property estate or Jersey Property Holdings estate has ever effectively been delivered. In my time here, there's been various attempts at that. And I think the concept of a one-government estate has started some time ago. I guess what I'm signalling is with our current direction in terms of becoming a more singular organisation, a more coordinated organisation, we've got a better chance now of delivering it than we ever have.
Right, okay. Sorry. My teleimage of you is still talking. Right. Any other questions from anybody?
May I ask my now?
One-minute questions.
Chairman, may I just have a follow-up question, not the question that you were asking? So, Mr Scape, would you not expect your estate manager to have a rough estimate of cost of repairs for the properties within his control?
Well, I think what we've outlined is that we don't have that clarity about the true cost. I think we've got, we're catching up on property assessments and property inspections. So I think in an idle world, yes, we would have that. And I think what we signal today is that we are catching up with management systems in place to capture data, surveys of those properties, and the number changes on a frequent basis depending on the incidences we see, whether it be weather, damage or whatever it may be. So ideally, yes, but I'm cognisant, I'm quite real in the sense that we're not starting from, I guess, a solid place in this regard.
Okay, that's my one minute. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Adrian? Roland?
Oh, thanks.
John?
I'm on the car. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much indeed, Andy and Tim. I'm sorry it's been a bit disorganised, but it's the innate animosity of inanimate objects.
Thank you very much, Senator.
Well, thank you very much. We may have more questions for you, if you don't mind. But we'll just require an answer in writing if necessary.
Of course. That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.